I would also like to acknowledge the presence of our alternate board members tonight. Board member Ben Bell and alternate board member Gronk Beast. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alexa. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the minutes for the previous meeting. Is there any discussion regarding the minutes to the previous meeting?
I will make a motion to accept the minutes from the previous meeting.
Thank you very much. May I also get a second on that?
Second?
I have a motion and a second for approval of the meeting for the previous meeting. May we have a vote on that, please, Alexa?
Yeah. Board member Coon?
Agreed, yes.
Board member Brinkerhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Hope?
Yes.
And Chairman Laffle?
Yes.
Thank you.
Before we begin our first public hearing, I'd like to remind the board to use the public hearing only to ask questions, not to express opinions or indicate how they may vote on the matter. I would also like to remind all applicants that in order for your application to be cited in your favor, it should be supported by four members of the board. Any motion to approve an application that fails to achieve four concurring votes shall be deemed a denial without further action. Will the city attorney please introduce the first case this evening?
Of course, we have two cases tonight that are very similar. The first case is A-1753-H-20. Crown Castle, on behalf of AT&amp;T Mobility, is requesting a height exception to increase the height of a telecommunications tower on a property from 93 feet to 113 feet for the property located at 9975 East 104th Avenue, Zoned I-3 Heavy Intensity Industrial District. Mr. Matt Post will be presenting the case on behalf of the city this evening. Matt?
Good evening, board members and mayor. Alexa, will you be sharing the...? Oh, there we go. Thank you. Okay, so as Matt mentioned, this is case A-1753-H-20. A height exception request for an existing telecommunications tower. The applicant is Crown Castle. Next slide, please. Subject property is Zoned I-3, directly north of 104th Avenue and west of Highway 76 at the Schlumberger property. You can see that the entire area is heavy industrial I-3, and the PUD that's directly south, the planned unit development directly south of the subject site, is also an industrial planned unit development with existing industrial uses. Next slide, please. Future land use is general industrial as well, and general industrial future land use would support that I-2 or I-3 zoning designation, which would be a continued higher intensity industrial use into the future. Across the train tracks and Highway 85 to the west, of course, is worth mentioning is the Bell Creek PUD and residential subdivision as well. Next slide, please. Here's a quick aerial photo showing the specifics of the site and more specifically, the exact location of the proposed modification to the tower. You can see that it's located in the southeast corner of the subject site, but once again, a relatively heavy industrial area as far as uses are concerned, existing land uses around that would support that, as would the future land use designation. Next slide, please. So the applicant is requesting a height exception to increase the height of an existing monopole on site from 93 feet to 113 feet. This facility has been a continuous operation since 1997, when it was approved by the Adams County Planning Commission. You all might recall that this particular site was part of the Northern Enclave annexation back in 2007. The applicant states that with more than 20 years of continuous operation, the facility is crucial to the existing telecommunications network in the area. Next slide, please. So the request for modification of this tower is qualified to be reviewed as an eligible support structure, along with an eligible facilities request under the provisions of Section 6409A of the Middle Class Tax Relief Act, which is commonly known as the Spectrum Act. And what that act states is that state and local governments may not deny and shall approve any eligible facilities request for a modification of an existing wireless tower or base station that does not substantially change the physical dimensions of such tower or base station. Essentially, any existing telecommunications piece of infrastructure would qualify under 6409A as an eligible facilities request, and this particular site does qualify as an eligible facility or an eligible support structure, rather. Next slide. So staff performed a thorough review of this application in light of the request and found that the proposed increase in height does not constitute substantial change, as defined and clarified in FCC declaratory ruling and notice of proposed rulemaking, which specifically states that adding an antenna array to a tower out of the public right-of-way, and as we recall, this tower is not in the public right-of-way, it is on private property, that increases the height of the tower would not be considered a substantial change by itself if there is no more than 20 feet of separation between the nearest existing antenna. So more specifically, this provision in regard to substantial change is calling at a distance between an existing antenna and a proposed antenna, and the antenna is separate from the monopole. We'll continue in the presentation here and clarify the difference. So next slide, please. As we can see, a site plan of the existing facility, again, 104th directly to the south. Florence Street is directly to the east of the subject site, so it is relatively visible from the road that was recently constructed at the right-of-way Florence Street on the east there. But it is set back a considerable distance from 104th Avenue, though it is relatively visible because of its height. Next slide, please. Here we have a proposed elevation of what the tower would look like. You can see the separation distance from the middle antenna that you can see would be the highest, most existing antenna at this point. Of course, the upper antenna, and the antenna are the extensions of the tower itself that extend horizontally. And you can see the distance between those two antennas. And of course, that distance is less than 20 feet, which is why we have found that a substantial change is not occurring in line with 6409A clarifications. Next slide, please. Here's a view of the existing tower, east view from Florence Street. As you can see, it's a relatively large tower, so the applicant is proposing that 20-foot extension to the top, but again, that measurement from antenna to antenna, top of antenna to bottom of proposed antenna is less than 20 feet. Next slide, please. View of the tower from the intersection of Florence and 104th, the south side of 104th, again, relatively visible. Next slide. This photo is taken from the elevated portion of 104th Avenue that's just east of the subject site. So again, as you can see, the tower is visible. This is taken from the sidewalk there, so whether or not individuals notice this as they're driving by is up for debate, but that would be the view from the elevated portion of 104th Avenue. Next slide. Northeast view again. Little more detail on the tower. Next slide, please. So with the DRT analysis, ran through some of the basic requirements for monopoles here in the city, and the tower is located more than 2,000 feet from any existing telecommunications infrastructure in the area. That code does require a 2,000-foot minimum separation between existing telecommunications structures, and more specifically, probably macrostructures. The closest ones are at 10220 Brighton Road, roughly 4,500 feet away, then 10271 Peoria, which is over a mile away. The tower is located more than 100 feet from the nearest residential area. Again, that is a code requirement that towers be located at least 100 feet from residential area. Bell Creek subdivision is roughly 1,700 feet away to the west. The tower is already screened with fencing, as is a requirement of the LDC. Then any additional proposed modifications to this tower would be reviewed against the standards found in the Land Development Code. Next slide, please. So more specifically, in regard to the height exception request in light of 6409A, based to the qualification of this tower as an eligible support structure and the findings indicating that a substantial change is not occurring, based on the language of 6409A and the fact that federal law preempts jurisdictional law in these specific cases and scenarios, the city may not deny and shall approve the request for modification to increase the height of the tower from 93 feet to 113 feet. The development review team believes that there is a community need for the expanded operation of the facility to help with cellular signals across the range. These signals will also increase emergency access. But again, more importantly, we are reviewing this against the standards of 6409A and our ability to comment on this particular project. Next slide, please. Approval criteria for a height exception is as follows. The subject property and proposed structure do not and will, I'm sorry, do and will continue to comply with all other standards of the city. That is the case. The proposed increase in height would not impede solar access in any significant capacity due to its location. Visual access and rights of privacy, light and air have not been demonstrated to be impacted from the proposed facility. We have found this to be the case. The proposed increase in height will have no impact on the city's ability to serve the subject property. So public roads, fiber optic, electrical service lines already serve the site. There would be no impact. There's been no indication that emergency service will be impacted by the proposed structure, and as a matter of fact, the access to emergency service will more than likely be expanded through additional network capacity. The applicant has demonstrated a need for additional wireless coverage in the area, has demonstrated that the height exception under consideration is directly proportional to the ability to provide adequate coverage and capacity. The additional antenna will provide a significant increase in cell coverage in the general vicinity. It's also important to note that the city does encourage co-location of telecommunications infrastructure, and this height increase would allow for the co-location of an additional antenna as well. Next slide, please. Public notification was sent out for this particular request. Mailers were sent to all property owners within 500 feet. Publication was placed the local newspaper, and then signs were placed on the property. As of December 7th, yesterday afternoon at 5:00 PM, we have received no public comment in regard to this height exception request. Next slide, please. Oh, again, I'm sorry, the public notification piece. So based on the information presented, the development review team would recommend that the Board of Adjustment approve the request as outlined in the staff report. Next slide. And with that, I am available and willing to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Post. Appreciate that presentation. That brought some things to light. Board member Coons, would you have any questions regarding this matter?
I have none.
Thank you. Board member Brinkerhoff, do you have any questions in regards to this matter?
No, I do not.
Well, thank you very much. Mayor Hughesman, would you happen to have any questions in regards to this matter?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Hope, do you have any questions pertaining to this matter?
No.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much for your presentation, Mr. Post. That brought some things to light that I don't think we've heard about in the past regarding these cell phone towers. If there's any members of the public that would happen to have any questions pertaining to this tower. I don't know how they would do that, but it doesn't seem as though there are any. Seeing no one from the public registered or any comments, we'll close the public portion of this hearing. Does any other member have any final comments regarding this? Doesn't seem...
Chairman Laffle?
Yes, Ms. Hope, please.
I was wondering, in light of this 6409A that is listed, and it says that local governments may not deny and shall approve this, so in light of that, could not the Planning Commission just do that? Say that it was okay in light of this Section 6409? Or does it have to come to the board?
I think formally, it needs to come through the board, although it would seem unlikely we'd be able to legally deny this. Or perhaps the FCC or some of those sorts would come after us. So I don't believe that there is a way in which we could deny this unless they found something out of the code with it. Does that help with your question, Ellen?
Well, I guess so. I just was trying to expedite maybe some of these cell tower requests. If they're all going to come with this same, under this same Section 6409, I didn't know if Mr. Hader had any comment on that or not.
Matt, would you have any input regarding that question?
Sure, I'd just let you know that, you know, we do have a process that's set forth in the Land Development Code, and that's what we will follow. If it's something that, there was some talk with management in community development about possibly making some future changes in the LDC to maybe move this to an administrative review in the future. And that might speed up their time under the shot clock as well, because we have a limited time under which to handle these applications. And it's something that I think they're going to start to explore. At the same time, we do have this, you know, the federal regulations out there. That doesn't mean you can't deny it, but I think you'd be reasonable to expect a challenge if you were to deny it.
Yes.
Well, I think there is also the point of making the availability for the public to comment on these matters, although we, I don't believe, have ever seen a public comment regarding a cell phone tower, but we should hold that option open for people.
I think we have had some public comment in the past on some of these, limited in that regard, however. And I would also note that there are also processes within community development for even, you know, where notices sent and opportunities for comment to be received within the department without necessarily having a public hearing. So there are other avenues to collect that kind of feedback as well.
Thank you, Matt. Well, I think that it's nice that we didn't have to go over the landscaping detail with this gentleman again, as we did the last time. If there be no further discussion regarding this matter, I'm prepared to accept the motion. Mr. Brinkerhoff, could you forward this with a motion, please?
I can. I move that the Board of Adjustment find that the requested height exception for the property located at 9975 East 104th Avenue, contained in case A-1753H20, meet the criteria of the Land Development Code, and based upon such findings, approve the height exception.
Thank you. Chairman, Vice Chairman Hope, could you please second that motion?
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. Alexa, could you please call for the vote on this matter?
Yes. Board member Coon?
Pardon me?
Board member Coon?
I say yes, pass it, approved.
Board member Brinkerhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hope?
Yes.
And Chairman Laffle?
Yes. Well, I believe that they have successfully got their first approval. Will the city attorney please introduce the second case for the evening?
Of course. See, the second case is A-1754-H-20. Crown Castle, on behalf of AT&amp;T Mobility, is requesting a height exception to increase the height of a telecommunications tower on the property from 77 feet to 97 feet, add additional antennas for the property located at 17410 East 120th Avenue, Zoned PUD, Planning Unit Development District. Once again, Mr. Matt Post would be making a presentation on behalf of the city this evening.
Mr. Post, sir?
Okay, thank you, board members and mayor. So I apologize in advance, this will be a redundant presentation.
If I may interrupt, please. Mr. Post, do you have any new information to provide us that hasn't been provided within the packet that we received on this matter?
For this particular case?
Yes.
I do not, no.
Okay, thank you very much. Would there be any board members that have further questions in regards to this matter, given its similarity to the previous case? And I'll go down the list if I may. Mr. Coons, do you have any questions regarding this matter?
No questions.
Mr. Brinkerhoff, do you have any questions regarding this matter?
Nope.
Mayor Hughesman, do you have any further questions on this matter?
My only question would be in regards to the distance from platted homes as well as homes. I know Buckley Crossing is supposed to be platted in that area. Is that correct?
That's, that's supposed. Yeah, that's correct, mayor. So as far as existing right now, obviously Buffalo Run East would be the nearest existing residences, and those are more than 2,500 feet away. The area that we're looking at here would be, it's a little bit different, obviously, because it's a planned unit development, but it is commercial. It's a commercial use designation. So it is the same standards for separation apply, which would be the 100-foot standards for residences. And this is, again, located in the center of a commercial use area, and that PUD. So there, I would anticipate no risk of residential uses being established within that 100-foot buffer at any point in the future. And again, right now, the closest residences are more than 2,500 feet away.
Thank you.
Does that satisfy your questions, Mr. Mayor Hughesman?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Chairman Hope, do you have any questions for Mr. Post regarding this matter?
No.
No. Neither do I have any questions myself regarding this second hearing. Is there any members from the public that have come up that would have something to say about this?
I think you first meant to ask if there was an applicant present to address the commission tonight, correct?
Oh, yes, that's exactly what I meant to ask. Is the applicant present and would like to make any further comments regarding this matter?
Matt, who is your applicant?
I had some communication with our applicants. They are on the line right now and directly preceding this meeting, and they stated that they have nothing to add at this point, so unless they have changed their minds and they would like to speak up right now, then I believe they are not going to speak tonight.
Okay, well, here's their chance to speak up if they should care to do so.
You have one.
Okay, let that person speak.
Hello, is my audio working?
It is now.
Okay, awesome. Okay, I thought there was... Thank you, board, for hearing my case and the time to hear. My name is Christopher Guest. I am the National Zoning Manager for Crown Castle. What I would like to say is that we are doing an antenna co-location for increased coverage at the subject site. I'd like to thank Matthew Post and the planning staff at Commerce City. They have been wonderful in guiding us through this process, and we appreciate your consideration. And thank you, and I'll be here to fill any questions you may have.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Guest. Did anybody have any further questions for the representative? I don't see any further questions for Mr. Christopher Guest. That being the case, I would like to close the public portion of this meeting.
I think you meant to make sure there's no questions from the public that were submitted, correct?
Oh, well, yeah, that's what I meant to say, but I thought we already covered that once, but, but yes, is there any other questions from any other members of the public that happened to have gotten themselves into this meeting? No?
There were no registered speakers. Any comments we receive?
Pardon me?
We do not have any registrations or any comments.
So we have no other speakers or comments that have come in?
No.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to close the public portion of this hearing. Is there any further discussion by the board members before I call for the vote on this matter? Seeing none. Chairman Hope, could you please make a motion to approve this tower?
I move that the Board of Adjustments find that the requested height exception for the property located at 17410 East 120th Avenue, contained in case A-1754-820, meets the criteria of the Land Development Code, and based upon such findings, approve the height exception.
Thank you very much. And may I get a second on that, Mr. Brinkerhoff, perhaps?
I will second that.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second on the floor for approval. May you please call for the vote, Alexa?
Yes. Board member Coon?
I approve.
Thank you. Board member Brinkerhoff?
Approve.
Mayor Hughesman?
Approve.
Vice Chairman Hope?
Approve.
Chairman Laffle?
Approve.
Thank you.
I believe they have their variance for their second tower. Thank you very much. Does any member of the board have any further business they would like to address at this time?
You know, Chairman Laffle?
Yes.
This is kind of just kind of bugged me a little bit. So when we received our packet, which is back on December 3rd, which when I received my packet, and when I went through the packet, it listed that no, nothing was, they had received no feedback as of December 7th, which was yesterday. So I would like to see it truly say that nothing has been received on December 3rd, or whatever date that is that the packet goes out, and then an update when the presentation is done. So that's just an FYI for me.
Well, I would suppose somebody could clear up till the last minute, attempt to have their comments heard. Seems unlikely, but I think that should be available to them. to them. Um, how, how we are to know that, uh, shy of it being formally announced at the beginning of the meeting, I, I don't know.
Well, when they do the presentation at the very end, there's that one slide, I believe, um, Mr. Post, that says nothing has, nobody has said on such and such a date. So that could be updated on that slide from our packet. So that's just the housekeeping thing that I, just to make everything, um, the way it should be.
Well, thank you for that input, Ellen, I'm sure that'll be, uh, looked into that, uh, suggestion. Is there any other board members that have any, uh, thing they would like to bring up in this time? Seeing none. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, uh, Matt, do you got anything for us tonight? Where is he? His picture isn't even there anymore. There he is.
I do not have anything for you guys this evening. Um, I, I would note, however, that, um, I believe it was the, um, the resolution, uh, 2020-30 that authorized electronic meetings that required on notice, um, and required certain, made certain requirements for, um, submission of comments, um, in advance of a public meeting. Um, so I think when you're getting information that we hadn't received comments as of that certain date, that date is actually the, the, the deadline by which to submit comments. So if comments are submitted after that deadline, um, it's possible that they would not be able to make it into the record. Um, other than that, I have anything for you. Thank you.
So that's effectively a drop-dead date on comments has been established for these meetings?
Actually, I do think, as I, as I think about it, I do think we can still take comments, written comments up until the day of the meeting. Um, but it's the register to speak, I think, is required to, to happen further in advance. I, I can double check on that and make sure I, um, give you the details at the next meeting if you'd like.
Well, I, I think with the potential complexity of getting registered for the meeting, it, 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 it should have to be done, uh, in advance, so we don't have last-minute things happening. But, but thank you very much. Anything else, Mr. Hader?
Nope, that'll be all, thank you very much.
All right. So not to be redundant, but does any other staff member have any other board business they'd like to go over at this time?
Chairperson Lefal, I think we have the mayor with his hand raised.
I can't see his hand raised. But yeah, oh, there it is, there, sure enough, Mayor Hughesman, thank you very much. He's just off the sideless screen there, I couldn't see it.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment and thank all the board members of the board of adjustment for, uh, volunteering your time to participate in this and help the city make sure that we're making the right decisions and wish you all Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Well, well, thank you very much, Mayor Hughesman. Uh, anybody else? Mr. Post, we kinda cut off the tail, your, part of your, uh, work tonight, uh, you okay with all that?
Absolutely, as I said, I think the, the, the second presentation was redundant, the only difference was really the land use designation, so, um, I'm, I'm happy to cut things off early if you guys aren't, I think we're, everything's all squared away, so, um, yeah, thank you. I think Jennifer was, uh, had something to say.
Chairman Lefal, if I may?
Yes, you may.
I just wanted to, um, let the board of adjustment know that we do have a new planner, she's on the line with us tonight, her name is Jamie Rice. Um, she's one of our new senior planners, and she will be helping with the comp plan project, among other things, and so you certainly may be, um, interacting with her in the future or seeing some emails from her, so I wanted to be sure that you had a chance to be introduced to her, um, and just let you know that there was a new staff member on board.
Well, well, thank you very much for that. Uh, if there be no further business to come before this board, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all, good evening.